This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Good evening. Welcome to the Sampson City Council Meeting for Wednesday, November 16th. Happy birthday to my sister. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by Sampson Media on Charter Channel 193 and live streaming on their e-media website. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathering hybrid on the executive order by Governor Baker extended to March 2023, which allowed us to do so. I'll remind both, the members of the city council and the public remain mute under recognized by the city council president. Also, for the member of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak time or the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to an end. Marianne?
Connie Denham.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Omar Gomez.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Tom Peak.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Dan Rist.
Here.
Owen Zarrett.
Present.
Dave Munier.
Please stand up for the pleasure of the leader. The pleasure of the leaders.
States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
So we don't have any minister proof tonight. We're going to have that as soon as possible. Police speak time. Is anyone in the room, they want to address any comment related to the city to the council? I will ask the public to be respectful, to respect the councilors, to don't be personal, and to please talk only about what is happening at the city level. I know there's a lot of stuff happening in the city, but we have to move forward, and I hope the city understand that. Anyone here in the room want to say something? And can you please use, you state your name and address for the record?
Hello, my name is John Valanti. I live at 413 Main Street here in East Hampton. I'm here to ask you to not institute the ordinance on regulations for pregnancy centers, pregnancy research centers here in East Hampton. I just received notification from the Massachusetts Family Institute, and it says, Governor Baker, Governor Baker's recent vote that blocked the public funding of a defamation campaign against pregnancy resource centers. In the wake of Dobbs, we have seen pro-abortion extremists vandalize these life-affirming organizations, which simply provide health care and resources to expectant mothers. Meanwhile, pro-abortion politicians compound these efforts to silence pro-life Americans by attempting to enact taxpayer smear campaigns against pregnancy resource centers. Why? Because these organizations, often faith-based, refuse to refer for or provide abortions. The funding that Baker voted was contained in H5374, a budget bill not unanimously passed, a budget bill unanimously passed the Mass House and Senate on November 3rd. Language in its allotted, language in it allotted $1 million to a public awareness campaign to educate providers and the public about so-called crisis pregnancy centers and pregnancy resource centers and their lack of medical services. The legislation went on to say that said campaign shall include information on the availability of providers across the Commonwealth that provide legitimate medical and family planning services, inferring that the work of pregnancy resource centers providing pregnancy tests, diapers, formula, and strollers is something illegitimate. I would like to encourage you to not pass this ordinance because it seems to be discriminatory and targets a very, very hot social issue in our country and in our, in our state at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just for the record, we are not going to vote tonight. We, at the last meeting, we sent that proposal ordinance to the ordinance committee. The ordinance committee didn't meet yet, so we are not discussing that tonight's meeting. Anyone else from the public that we have here? I know we have some people in remote that want to participate. Seeing none, Johnny? And I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name.
Do you want my name?
No.
That's okay. Hi, I'm Joni Bulo. I live at 27 Paul Street, and I'm here to simply keep the conversation going about the intersection at South and Main Street. On Monday morning, on November 14th, there was another accident at this intersection requiring both cars to be towed away. I've requested the police report in redacted form, but it's not yet available. So I don't have more details about the exact incident, but I'd just like to throw it out there because the traffic study was completed, but we are looking for monies to analyze that data.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Let's move to Julie.
Hi, thank you. I was a little slow on pushing my hand there. Julie from Precinct One. I just wanted to address just very briefly the controversy that's going on with our city council, and I just wanted to make a little recommendation if I could. I've had four years, I've served four tours of the U.S. Army. I've worked 15 years in corporate. I know a little bit about leadership, and I just want to say that there's many styles of leadership. Some authoritarian and some are more democratic, and this can be good as long as you respectfully and effectively communicate and keep the doors of communication open. And I'm just going to make a suggestion to President Gomez and to the mayor. You can take it or you cannot take it, but I really think all members of the city council and the mayor as well would benefit from crucial conversation training. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. But there's three critical components in that, and they're high stakes, differing views, and strong emotions. And I really feel like learning to effectively communicate is a must for a leader. And you may find that you not only will like each other a little bit more, but you'll build trust and respect. These are the key components to build a cohesive and effective city council, and in turn, you'll be able to serve our community in an unbiased, impartial, objective manner and probably be a whole lot happier. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Seeing none, I'm going to move to communication for elected official boards and committee. Is any counselor have something to say? Counselor Sarret?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to mention this as a point of order. It's not, I want to be clear, it's not meant to point a finger at anybody because I know sometimes when we talk about items on the agenda, we get passionate, we really want to speak up. But I just wanted to call the council's attention to remind the council that when, when dealing with new business, the motion involved a new business is a motion to refer, and that means that the merits of, the contents of an item can't be deliberated or discussed. The only discussion or deliberation is on the merits of the referral. So which committee it goes to, or I guess technically if it should be referred at all. But we can't discuss or comment on the actual materials in the item. And I feel that that happened at the last meeting, and I understand that passions and emotions run high in the political realm sometimes, so we want to comment on things. But again, this isn't a finger pointing thing, it's just a reminder. We had extensive conversations about this last term around an item. And extension to that, the other thing I would just say for all of us is that we all spend a lot of time on agenda items, hours, tens of hours, hundreds of hours. And just to request for everyone that we all make sure that we've thoroughly reviewed information in the packet and asked questions and done some of the research before we comment. Again, I know that we can be passionate about certain items and we want to speak out to it, but I just feel that for the public process too, in terms of commenting based on a thorough process of vetting, that that's just a good practice. So that's all I wanted to say. And then, just really briefly, I just want to apologize for my appearance. I, I am, this is, this is, I'm not participating in No Shave November. This is part of my religious practice around some personal issues recently where for 30 days I cannot cut my hair or shave, and so I will be well-coiffed and shaven the next time you see me, but I just wanted to call note to that. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Sarret, and yours for your knowledge on everybody else. Thank you for exposing that because we can, we respect everybody's religions and belief. Major's communication? Seeing none? There's only 6:12. So let's take a finance report.
Good evening, everybody. Does everybody hear me?
Let the report go in. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Finance committee did meet last week. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend due to a personal matter regarding surgery for my wife, and I would like to thank Counselor Peak, Counselor Denham for taking over, and Counselor Gomez for running the computer. The items that are under public hearing were adequately dealt with for this evening, but the other thing I want to call attention to is that we had a very, and I watched the video, there was a very good meeting with the school committee's finance committee for the understanding, for councilors to understand and ask questions regarding the school budget. It was pretty informative. It lasted about an hour and a half, and again, I want to thank Counselor Peak for running that meeting quite well. There is nothing on our agenda, nor is there anything in new business that requires a meeting for the finance committee, so I don't think I'll be calling the meeting of the finance committee until after the next meeting in December, when I see if there are any appropriations. Mr. President, that is all.
Thank you, Counselor Rist. Counselor Sarret, probably safety.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have not met since the last meeting. I did, obviously, I appreciate the comment earlier. We have the South and Main Street four-way traffic light on our agenda. There was a recent accident. I, again, just to reinforce, the traffic count has been performed, but the DPW needs, and I think somewhere around 20, $15,000 to $20,000 to analyze that data, and none of, none of any spending like that or requests for appropriations can come until we certify free cash, just for the public to know. So obviously, that continues to be a point of concern, and I just wanted to give a quick shout out to the DPW. A resident recently had expressed concerns about the lack of a crosswalk over near Orchard View, and as luck would have it, the DPW had the resources to install two curb cuts there and a crosswalk, which doesn't always happen. With most of the time, government moves slowly, as we all know. So thank you to Director Nudelman and his crew. And it looks like I have three items here that will need 90-day extensions. So in the form of a motion, I'd like to request 90-day extensions on the review of South Main four-way traffic light, the review of the use of electric speed monitoring signs, and the new city quick actions. 90 days for each of those, please.
Second. Page. We have a motion and a second for the three items that we have in the agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Marianne?
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zarrett.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Our next meeting is December 6th.
6:00 PM?
6:00 PM, and we will have the DPW there. They couldn't make it to the last meeting, and I think they have some important updates, and we will have fire departments, so I'll try to request that those be relatively brief. And we'll probably be discussing reviewing other items on the agenda and finalizing the ordinance review committee, and that concludes.
Thank you. We'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open public hearing. Marianne?
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zarrett.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Motion passes. Public hearings is officially open. We have the first item is into the department of transfer of $8,000, Counselor Peak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Right, so this is for the Veterans Service Department. We have one of the services that our Veterans District that we have with, with South Hadley provides is burial costs for veterans who live in East Hampton who passed away and that their families, they can't afford a burial. So it's a $4,000 payment that we make to the family, and they, most of the folks end up buried in a cemetery, a veteran cemetery in Agawam. This is all stuff that I learned at the last meeting, but it, so there's two things that happened here. One of them's really simple. It was just the, the request happened right at the end of the year, so they didn't have time to process it, but since it's a thing that happened last fiscal year and we're using money this fiscal year to pay for it, it requires a public hearing. The other one is one where our Veterans Director actually realized that a, the family of a deceased veteran in East Hampton, I don't recall the year, it was either last year or a year before that, had erroneously been denied a payment. The, the method for looking at eligibility, that there should have, there was a process that was supposed to, this was before our current director came in, and the previous director had erroneously denied a person this payment, and I guess that individual has still not been buried. So we want to get that money, or I can't speak to anyone else, I personally want to get that money to make sure that these veterans are able to be respectfully buried. It comes out to $8,000. It, they don't, there isn't a sense that this is going to affect, you know, the overall budget in any way, so it just seems sort of like a no-brainer to me.
Any counselor have any questions?
Just a.
Counselor Riley?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, I'm in support of doing this, and you know, it's nothing that we did, but I do want to apologize to the, to the family that has had to experience this process, and you know, I hope that we can move on this quickly and then those families can find peace and move on. So I'm very happy to do this tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Riley. Counselor Rist?
Yeah, I'd like to ask our Veterans Department head, Mr. Slater, to explain why that did happen because it is unfortunate, and I'm wondering if there are steps in place to try and prevent this. Is it just a communication thing, Mike, or is there, I mean, what happened there? I missed the meeting, so I apologize if you're repeating yourself.
No, no problem at all, Counselor.
Before Mike, before. Counselor Rist, he did, and now Counselor, no Counselor, Mike.
Am I good now? President Gomez?
Yes.
Okay. So what happened is in 2019, this family came to Veterans Services in East Hampton to apply for a burial benefit, which like Counselor Peak had mentioned, it's a $4,000 benefit that's used to bury indigenous veterans and ensure that they're properly entombed. The previous director did not follow the steps and actually apply for it. He just told the family they were not eligible. When we deny someone a benefit, we're required to provide them with a notice of action that explains their appeal right. That never happened. So this family came to me in my time. We've worked to get it resolved. The state has already approved the 75% reimbursement to the city, so now it's just the finalizing of paying the bill, getting the check into the hand of the funeral home, and getting this veteran laid to rest in Agawam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have only one question, and it's probably for Hadel. I think Hadel is the city auditor, and she's on the call. I think I saw her. Right? Just for the clarification of, for everybody, including probably department heads, they are seeing a transfer, and it's not from free cash, and look like it, it's going to be transferred from one account and look, it's going to be transferred to the same account. Can you explain that to the councilors and to the other department heads if they have any question about what we're doing transferring now without free cash?
Yeah, it's, it's a, technically a vote, because what Michael mentioned to me that he has enough money in his budget where he can, he can pay out of this year's budget, but because it's a prior fiscal year bills, he can't pay it without city council's vote. So this is technically a, asking for a vote, there is no monetary moving from one account to another account, but still giving him permission, or me giving, giving me green light to say, you can pay out of this year's budget.
Perfect. Thank you. Any Counselor? Peak?
Just apologies if I didn't make that clear, but yeah, this is coming out of his, this year budget for, to pay a last year expense, and so that just requires a council thing, but yeah.
Thank you. Anyone from the public want to participate in this public hearing? Seeing none? Counselor Peak?
Okay. Let's see, that one's here. Okay. A request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, $8,000 to be transferred from Veterans Cash Benefit, $8,000 to be transferred to Veterans Cash Benefit, $8,000 to, the amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide, vote to pay prior fiscal year bill for Veterans Service out of current fiscal year 2023 budget.
We need a second. We have a motion and a second for the $8,000 to pay the prior fiscal year bill for Veterans Service out of the current fiscal year 2023 budget. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Marianne? Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Sorry, Counselor Kuzinski, I saw you.
I just wanted to reiterate that it is our sincere apologies to the family. This should not have happened. I am grateful that we were able to straighten it out. I am grateful that we're able to send a message, I hope, to everyone that this is of utmost importance, and we hope that you find whatever peace you may find. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinski. Counselor Peak?
I would just, to add to that, you know, we did speak with Mike, and the sense that he got is that this was not the sort of thing that was probably like systematic and required like a real audit of, of the past or anything like that. I would just say to anyone hearing, like if there's, if somebody was denied a benefit like this in the past and they feel like it wasn't fair, if you're listening, like, reach out, let us know, because you know, when there's something, when something goes wrong once, I always sort of worry that it might have gone wrong a couple times, but in any case, I'm glad we can fix this one at least.
Thank you, Counselor Peak. Any other counsel? Seeing none? Marianne?
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zarrett.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye. Motion passes. Counselor Peak?
Thank you, Mr. President. The other thing that we have, that we, we met with the Chair of the Board of Assessors, Peter Davies, who's here tonight, and can probably answer any questions that you have better than I can, but to give you a broad sense, the, once again, the recommendation from the Board of Assessors is that we not make any changes to our current practices when it comes to tax classifications. So that would mean setting a factor of one and not having any sort of discounts for the various things that you would theoretically be allowed to provide a discount for, mostly because in many cases they don't, they're not really like applicable to East Hampton, and then also to not have a split rate between residential and commercial, since our commercial is already a pretty small part of our situation. This has been the recommendation for all the future years, so that was satisfactory to me, but if anybody has any questions, I'm sure that Mr. Davies would be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Counselor Peak. And we have Sandy, the, he's not the city assessor, but we have a contract with him, and he is working with, with our city to be kind of the intern city assessor until we hire a full-time one. And maybe if, Sandy, you want to add something? You're muted. Sandy, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Actually, what I, what I really wanted to say was, due to Christine's efforts in the absence of any assessor, I walked into an office that was in really good shape. I have walked into other offices with similar situation, and they were in total disarray. I've walked into a couple offices where I just replaced an assessor who was retiring and basically stopped doing their job three to five years earlier, and the offices are in worse shape. Christine has done a really good job of keeping it together. What I found is most stuff is pretty much done as far as data. It's basically some swiss cheese. There are holes. I keep finding little things that didn't get done and need to be done. We had some subdivisions that weren't put into the database, but now that the assessors' information has been certified by DOR, I can put those in this week and get that up. So we're in pretty good shape, just some catching up to do.
Thank you. Peter or Christine, do you want to add something?
No. Unless you have any questions on anything.
No. By the way, thank you, Christine. Any counselor have any question for assessors or Christine or Peter? No one? Okay. Anyone from the public want to participate in this public hearing? Any question or any comments? Seeing none? Counselor Peak?
Okay. I move that the city of East Hampton set a factor of one for the fiscal year 2023 tax rate, keeping a single tax rate for all classes of property, and to not grant an open space discount, nor a residential exemption, nor a small commercial exemption as recommended by the Board of Assessors and the Finance Committee.
There you go.
We have a motion and a second for the fiscal year.
Second.
2023 classification. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Marianne?
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Brad Riley.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Owen Zarrett.
Aye.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you, Counselor Peak. Counselor Rist?
Thank you, Mr. President. We now have a continuation of the public hearing regarding salary increases for the school committee and the city council. I will talk about them, and I think we should allow public discussion for both increases, but I must, when we're ready, do a motion separately for each one because they're two separate ordinances. Just to review for the public and for anybody who might not remember, the charter, our constitution, requires us in the first year of our city council term to review the salaries, stipends of elected officials, boards, and committees. This must be done by December 31st of the first year. This prevents a last-minute increase of salary when a council is finishing its term, December 31st, 2023, in this case. It is absolutely important that everybody understand that no current member of the city council, nor a current member of the school committee, will get this salary increase unless they run and are reelected. unless they run and are reelected to their positions. So this particular ordinance, these ordinances for salary increases do not come into effect until January 2, 2024. As Chair, I recommended a $2,000 increase to get the debate rolling in the Finance Committee. That turns out to be a 50% and a 100%, a 50% increase in the city council salary and a 100% increase in the school committee's salary. The Finance Committee agreed three to zero to pass it on for a full council debate. We hope that a large increase will make it possible, especially for lower income people with multi-jobs, to be able to afford to serve. Personally, this is my own opinion, I struggled with this to get much higher. We had different opinions on how high we should go, especially with the council salary, because our taxpayers are suffering now with high inflation and increased taxes due to our schools that we just, they voted on, but they are paying these taxes. So I struggled with anything larger. However, I do believe that public service can be trying. We have controversies all the time and you have to have a lot of patience and you have to do the job. So we should increase the salary and I don't think I'd object if counselors really, if this full council wants to increase it further. I just have to debate it personally with regard to how the taxpayers will resolve it. I leave it to you now, Mr. President, to get the opinion of the public or any way you would like to proceed, sir.
Thank you, Counselor Rist. Any counselor have any questions or comment before making motions and amendments? Counselor Peak?
I'm just saying, I just want to say, I really do hope that we hear from at least a few members of the public. If you're here for something else, but you want to speak on this, that would be great. I, you know, I have a lot of feelings about this thing that I spoke about at length at the last one. I don't have anything additional to add really, but, or actually, I do have one small thing, but I just think that this is something that, you know, we were anticipating a good deal of public thought, you know, both for and against it. And so far, it's been quite quiet. I know that there's a lot going on. We're approaching the holidays. There's just the midterms that were stressful. There's, people's political attentions might be elsewhere, but I do think this is, even though it's just a small amount of money, I expected it to generate a bit of, a bit of attention and so far that has not been the case. The one thing, other thing I just want to add is that when we're talking about this, I think we need to be a little bit, and this goes really for anything, any financial decision that the city makes, I think we do need to be a little bit cautious about how we talk about this in terms of how it relates to the taxpayers. Because I think there's a sense from some people who are not deeply involved in city government that when we increase spending, their taxes automatically go up. That's not the case. We have Prop 2 and half. What this would mean potentially, if we gave ourselves a very large increase in, or even a small increase in salary, is we're going to raise the same amount of taxes one way or another, but it's going to go somewhere. And that somewhere could be higher city council stipends or it could be something else. And there's unlimited other things that you could potentially want to do with that money. So that is the real cost here. But I just think it's important when we talk about, you know, the Counselor Rist commented about the current economic hardships and like, while being totally understanding of those hardships, this will not change the amount that people are taxed at all, whether we pass it or not, whether we give ourselves $1 or not, give the council, the future council, rather, I'm sorry, like $1 stipend increases or $10,000 stipend increases, the amount that the taxpayers end up paying will not change. It's just the amount of money that the city has for all the other services would be slightly smaller if the council is paid slightly more. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor Peak. Counselor Rist?
Yes, I want to thank Counselor Peak for their clarification. That's excellent. My comment has to do with perception and the taxpayers' perception of when they are struggling, when their buying power is limited, that we are giving a council salary increase. Even though it's a future increase, it is an increase and it always creates some controversy. So that's the struggle I have. But Counselor Peak, excellent comment. That's exactly right. This does take away from other budget possibilities because it's an increase in one line and we have to pay for it somehow with maybe a decrease in another line in the budget. But that's for the mayor to decide. In any case, I just wanted to thank Counselor Peak for that excellent comment.
Thank you, Counselor Rist. Counselor Kuzinski?
I just wanted to, in full disclosure, speak to the issue of an email that I had sent to all the counselors as I began to research again this issue. I shouldn't say again, as I researched it. And it had to do with an interesting fact and what it essentially was is a point of information. There was no debate. There was no discussion. Nobody responded to my email. But I wanted the public to know that Durham School Services, Bus Services, is currently advertising for a position. And as we think about the value or need or importance or what we're paying for services, jobs, hourly wages in the world today, it was interesting to note that with no experience, that's somebody who would be trained to get their CDL. This is somebody who would get benefits of health, benefits of life insurance, dental insurance, vision insurance, straight off, you had to be 21 years old and you have to have a license, $22 an hour to start. In Springfield, I believe they're offering $26 or $28 an hour, and I thought that that would help to frame the discussion. Again, this is not any salary discussion for any of the current counselors. This is for January 2024. And the current wage that is being advertised for East Hampton schools, school buses, drivers, $22 to start. No experience, no nights, no weekends.
Thank you, Counselor Kuzinski. Counselor Peak? I would also, sorry, Counselor Saros was first.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I've gone back and forth on this proposal. I had submitted a potential amendment to both of these motions. And I was trying, we kind of discussed this to some extent last time. I was trying to figure out exactly what the rationale is for these numbers, where they come from. We talked about, do we look at other communities? Do we try to extrapolate from those communities based on how much they get paid, the size of the community, the amenities available to the municipal representatives there in terms of how much they would get, they would get paid? And I was going to ask more about the source of these increases or the rationale for them today, but you know what? I'm not. And here's why. I have a committee of three of my peers who deliberated this, who spent quite a bit of time doing so and recommended this three-nothing. And on top of that, this committee has a chair who's been sitting on the city council and dealing with finance issues for, I'll just say a long time. And I respect that. And so I feel that while with a lot of things, we want some sort of tangential or tangible rationale behind things. First of all, as we discussed, it would be really difficult in the absence of some sort of, I don't know, for lack of a better term, audit or analysis, that would be expensive, as my colleague to my right pointed out, who knows about this stuff. I think that I trust, I trust the chair. He's dealt with these types of things for a while and he knows what he's doing. And I think that at the end of the day, the question isn't how or why, it's what. And these numbers feel good to me. I had put forward some amendments that would actually suggest 7,000 for the council and 3,500 for the school committee. I don't feel comfortable with decreasing what's recommended for the school committee. You know, I feel that we all work very hard and it's so hard to put a dollar amount on what we do, but in a very lengthy way, I just want to say that I respect the work of my colleagues. I respect the three, if there was, if this was two to one, maybe I'd think about it a little bit more, but it was three-nothing with a chair of a committee who has done this for much longer than I've been involved in municipal government. And so I'm fine with these numbers and thank you for the work.
Thank you, Counselor Peak?
Just two things. I wanted to say that, you know, while I am fine with these numbers and I think that, sorry, that's going to be three things. All right. While I'm fine with these numbers, I do see them as a jumping off point, right? I see as like, what I want to avoid is a period where we don't discuss this again for a decade. I do want to point out that under these numbers, using my estimate that I probably put in approximately 10 hours a week into council stuff, maybe that's four or five hours of meetings plus checking in with counselors, checking in, fielding calls from constituents, meeting with department heads and the mayor, say on average, given week, there are some more, way more, but I'd say average week, maybe about 10 hours. This is still under minimum wage. We'd still be, this is still like a sub, like it would be illegal to pay a person this if they were like an hourly worker rather than a stipend. I just, I do want to point that out, like, because I don't, like, I see this as a thing that I'm doing for my community and the purpose of the stipend is to help compensate some of the expenses that I incur in the course of doing that, whether that's going to, in my case, going to trainings, maybe traveling for things, whether that's, you know, having to, for some people, maybe hire a babysitter or whatnot, or have to, having to do things just a little bit differently because your life is different, right? So I don't see this as a wage and so I'm fine with that, but I just, I do want to point that out, that you, at this point, if you are somebody who's paycheck to paycheck, you still literally would be better off, like, working those same hours at like CVS or Burger King rather than being a city councilor if you're talking about, you know, taking care of your family. So if we're talking about attracting folks who maybe have different economic means, like, again, I think this is a good start. I am not objecting to it. I am just saying, I really want to encourage people to keep this conversation open because that's what it is. And just to Counselor Zarrett's point, like, I appreciate the faith you're putting in us, but just so you know, like, that, that meeting did sort of end with us saying, well, this is, like, we're all fine with this, so let's bring it in and we'll have a further discussion, see what the public says, see what our fellow counselors say. So, you know, if there's opinions of the contrary, I think it's, like, we expected that. I don't think that, we didn't come to this number through some sort of hard scientific process. All right, I've been talking a while. I'm done.
Are you sure? Thank you.
For now.
Counselor Riley?
Yeah, so I guess just the only comment that I have is, you know, I, what I have heard over the last meeting and then this meeting is that one of the primary reasons for doing this is to try to increase recruitment and diversity in public governance, which I think is a good thing to do. This alone is not going to achieve the results that we're asking for because in the last election, you all ran unopposed. Nobody even bothered to run against you. So, you know, this is an engagement issue and I think if we're serious about increasing engagement and increasing diversity in the city council, we should be partnering with some of our community boards and agencies and to start an active recruitment and diversity strategy. Because I think the city would be better off if we did do that, but just simply doubling the salary, I don't think is going to produce the results that it does because, I mean, there were 10 people in total on the ballot and one resigned. And so now everybody that was on the ballot were all on city council. So there isn't actually, you know, there's nobody to run against. So, I mean, in essence, if nobody gets engaged in this next election process, we are likely just going to be sitting here again, you know, for the next two years. So, you know, I'm open to it. I've reached out to some of the folks in the community to try to get some feelers out there, but it's a long process and I think that everybody should be committed to engaging in it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Denham?
Yeah, I totally agree. I think this is my biggest challenge with this is are we not just going to get, well, as the only woman on this council, are we not going to end up with more men who are running, right? So representation is important and it matters. And at the same time, it's expensive to run, right? It's, it costs a great deal. And if I don't win and I don't get $6,000, then I'm in the hole at the very start, right? Or I'm digging myself out of the hole if I, if I win, right? And so I think there's a number of issues and I think there's a number of questions that we have to be thinking about in terms of being able to increase representation on the council. And the hope is, right, that this is a start and it's a beginning, but that recruitment piece is paramount right now. And that was a point that I made at the, in the committee meeting.
Counselor Rist?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank Counselors Zarrett for the comment. I've been on the council 27 years, just so people know. I started at this, one of the things that was on my mind as we debated increasing the salary by a large amount was I started in public service to pay back to this community because it was a village that raised my very large family. And I feel that public service at the small town, town meeting and in our small city is about how we can help our city. It certainly never was because I wanted to make any money. That has changed a little bit because our responsibilities have been magnified and responsibility is why we should give both the school committee and the council more compensation. But I urge people, especially with regard to recruitment, if they want to help their neighborhoods or the people that they want to help, this is the way to do it because you have the ability to vote on very important matters that come before us. And it never was about the money to me. On the other, the other comment that I think Counselor Zarrett mentioned was data and how we would look at that. It's very hard. We're the smallest city, our second smallest city in the Commonwealth and you can't compare us to Northampton or others and how much they get paid. Yes, they get more benefits, but we are a small city with a small budget. So how fast we grow, that has to grow our salaries, that has to be considered. And lastly, this is a start. I hope, many of you are very intelligent and very good at what you do for this city. I hope you will continue and the next term, increase it again. Incrementally, we should keep increasing it, but I don't think you can compare it to hourly wages and things like that. It's about public service for me. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rist. Anyone from the public? Counselor Kuzinski?
I wanted to thank Counselor Rist for his comments and his 27 years of service. And to say, I know your motivations in the beginning had nothing absolutely to do with money and that's great. When I began, I think it was in 2003, I didn't cash the first 12 checks I received. Why didn't I cash it? Because I felt I was doing this totally as a public service and I was helping, I was learning. And I've realized, as Counselor Rist has noted, that the job has magnified, the responsibilities have magnified, the polarization, the tension has magnified. To add a few other issues over the last many years. But yes, we are all here to help the community. The people, but there are people who cannot afford to have the privilege or ability to say, hey, I don't have to cash a check or I don't have to collect any money for the services or I'll take a small salary. I think we have to be realistic at this point about what the marketplace is demanding. Otherwise, we're shortchanging. Otherwise, we're shortchanging this city. We do expect to receive the best from all our councillors, their time, their attention. And frankly, I, I don't think we, we have, I, I think there's lots to learn in terms of, of what the laws are. If any one of us who's joined the council would say, how much time have you spent studying the laws of the Commonwealth? Studying regionalization, looking at other governments in the Commonwealth to see what the good ideas are? It is an inordinate amount of time. Oftentimes, I'm spending, don't tell my listeners, 20 or 30 hours a week and I'm sure others are doing the same. But taking the 10 hours for a moment, I'd like to just do that. And does anyone have the figure of what the stipend would be if that was paid at minimum wage? Because I certainly believe everyone here does the 10 hours and I think that would be interesting to know that number.
Seven thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Thank you, Consul Kozinski.
I'm sorry. I apologize, Mr. President.
Just let me go to the public first. Is anyone from the public that want to participate, make any comment or questions about this? Public hearing. Can you please go to the podium and state your name and address?
Uh-oh.
Hello, my name is Doradah Marl and I live at 15 Liberty Street. I was just gonna ask, the last figure that was calculated, figured out, I was just wondering, I didn't quite hear it. Seven thousand?
It's from the school committee. It's from 2,000 to 4,000. The school committee chairwoman or chairperson said from 2250 to 4,250. And for the city council, instead of 4,000 will be 6,000. For the city council president will be, instead of 4,500, will be 6,500.
Thank you for those figures. And I want to thank you for clarifying what this financial concerns have been for increasing salaries because we are always sensitive to that and kind of new to the commi, community myself and just beginning to get involved in situations for the commit, for the, for the city. Appreciate you letting me take the time and inquire. Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome to the community. Any other want to participate? Consul O'Zaret?
I want to be very clear and preface this statement that this is purely for the sake of comedy, but Counselor Rist said before that many of us are very intelligent. He didn't say all of us are very intelligent.
Okay. That's just for the record, I guess, right?
That's meant as a joke.
Thank you.
It's a little bit of levity.
Thank you, Consul O'Zaret. Any other councillors? That was only one joke. I'm not gonna take any other joke. Consul Rist?
I should have said every one of you is intelligent. Excuse me.
Yeah, thank you, Consul Rist. Any other councillor? No? Consul Rist?
Mr. President, I assume you're asking me to make a motion?
Please.
I'll make the first motion with regard to the school committee. I move to amend the city ordinance, Chapter 2, Section 2-17, School Committee Salary, so that it reads, "In accordance with the Home Rule Charter, Chapter 4, Section 4-1E, the annual salary of six elected members of the school committee shall be 4,000 per member, effective January 2, 2024. The salary of the school committee chair shall be 4,250, effective January 2, 2024."
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the city ordinance amendment, Chapter 2, Section 217, School Committee Salaries. Any further discussion? Consul Kozinski?
I'm wondering why we're starting with the school committee rather than start with the city council where we've spent most of our time. And so it was a point of order and I thought we were dealing with the council and we're then gonna deal with the school committee.
We have a motion and a second.
Mr. President, as I indicate, I'm sorry, Mr. President, may I?
Consul Rist?
As I indicated at the top of the discussion, we were discussing all salary increases, not just the school committee and separating them. They're separated as ordinances, so I apologize if I wasn't clear on that. When we're talking about increasing salaries, it's about both of them. And I started with the school committee because it's the first thing on the public hearing agenda that we received.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. Marianne?
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consul Rist?
I move to amend the city ordinance as Chapter 2, Section 2-18, City Council Salary, so that it reads, "In accordance with the Home Rule Charter, Chapter 2, Section 2-4, the annual salary of the city councillors shall be 6,000 per member, effective January 2, 2024. The salary of the city council president shall be 6,500, effective January 2, 2024."
Second.
We have a motion and a second, city ordinance amendment, Chapter 2, Section 218, City Council Salary. Any further discussion? See you now, Marianne.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Marianne?
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye. Motion passes. Public hearing officially closed. Appointments, Consul Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Appointment Committee met earlier today at 5:30 PM to discuss the appointments of Stephen Colacelli and Felicia Jadzick to the East Hampton City Arts Coordinating Committee. So first, the mayor requested that Mr. Colacelli's appointment expiration date be moved from December 31, 2022 to December 31, 2025, given that the seat would be, that he would be filling expires in a few weeks and city council would not have enough time to approve his appointment and then also reintroduce business to reappoint him. After conferring with Councillor Gomez and the City Clerk's Office, we agreed that a term expiration date of December 31, 2025 would be acceptable. So, to give an overview of the applicants, Stephen Colacelli and Felicia Jadzick are a husband and wife duo who collaborate regularly with the East Hampton City Arts Coordinating Committee. They are currently planning a Porch Fest series for the 2023 summer season where local musicians would play on people's front porches and residents could attend by sitting on their lawns throughout the East Hampton committee, uh, community. In their application, they mentioned the recommendations for their appointment came from City Arts Coordinator Pasqualina Azarello. So I reached out to her and she sent me an email back and she said, quote, that they have, quote, "served in various capacities over the past several months. I give my highest recommendation for both of them to join the ECA Coordinating Committee. They come in with excellent skill sets in the realms of arts and culture, community engagement, event planning, marketing and communication, and empathetic social practices, all things that we'd love to formally welcome into our organization. Additionally, they have both already poured hours and hours into brand-new event planning that ECA has for the spring in 2023 and we'd love to acknowledge their efforts with an appointment to our committee." Now, we're all familiar with the incredible work that Pasqualina and her team have done for the city of East Hampton. I, for one, hold her word in high regard. If she would like to have these appointees on her committee, I personally see no reason to not approve them. We had one absence today, so the Appointment Committee voted 2-0 to approve their appointments. So therefore, in the form of a motion, I'd like to approve the appointment of Felicia Jadzick to the East Hampton City Arts Coordinating Committee with a term expiration date of December 31, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to approve the two new majorial appointments. Any further discussion? Consul O'Zaret?
Just to speak to both the applicants, I didn't know that they were applying to be members of the committee. I've just organically through conversations with them and I, they had mentioned this concept, the Porch Fest. I was very excited about their excitement about the city in general as well as their vision in terms of what can be brought to the city and how they could add to our already thriving arts community. So I was very excited to hear this and so obviously therefore enthusiastically support this addition to our ECA. And I don't know if, I mean, it's not really a spoiler, but it might also result in more doughnuts for the city as well.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Thank you, Consul. Any other councillors? See you now, Marianne?
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consul Riley, do you have any schedule?
Well, we, we still have to do Stephen Colacelli separately, different expiration, sorry. No, that's okay. So, also in the form of a motion, I'd like to approve the appointment of Stephen Colacelli to the East Hampton City Arts Coordinating Committee with a term expiration date of December 31, 2025.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to approve the new majorial appointment. Any further discussion? See you now, Marianne.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consul Riley?
Okay. And so, the, typically, the next scheduled meeting would be for the day after Thanksgiving. I do want to be mindful of the holiday season and, and how certain members of our council and appointees and chairs celebrate that holiday. So, we will have new business before us, but that date will be set at a future time and thus concludes.
Thank you, Consul Riley. Ordinance, Consul Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, for ordinance, we have settled on a date for our next meeting, which is November 22 at 6:00 PM at 50 Payson and it's gonna be an in-person meeting. I, I am still limited for how long I can sit in one spot, but as the chair, I can dictate the length of the meeting, so I'm gonna try, try my luck out in, out in the world as I recover here. So we will be meeting. I do want to be really clear, super, super clear, for anybody that's looking to come to that meeting to talk about the CPC ordinance that we have, we have not yet taken up in committee, we will not be discussing it at all. It, it's not something that we are going to be discussing, it's not on our agenda for that meeting. What we are gonna be discussing is we have some new business that's coming in tonight that we will discuss around plastics. We do, we will be discussing the vacant storefront ordinance, which we're hoping to get some resolution to, and those are gonna be the two focuses of the meeting. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that. I do have some good news for those who have been waiting for the, the verdict of our city clerk on how to advertise the ordinance item that was basically our, how we resolved the ordinance review committee's final report. There was a lot of changes and so Barbara had to figure out how to post that. It's all posted on the city website. So what I'd like to do is, in the form of a motion, I'd like to set a public hearing for those items that are part of the ordinance reviews committee final report that are listed on the website currently.
Second.
When is our next meeting? December what?
Uh, December 7th, I'm sorry.
7th. We have a motion and a seconds to set up public hearings about the ordinance review committee final report, December 7, I see 15 in December. Any further discussion? See you now, Marianne.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consul Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. And since I have been out, we have not met, so thus concludes.
We have to extend, yeah, we have to extend 90 days, the vacant storefront ordinance.
Aha. I, I would like to extend that for 90 days in the form of a motion.
Second. Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to extend any day, the vacant storefront ordinance. Any further discussion? See you now, Marianne.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Consul Derby?
Thank you.
Property, Consul Kozinski?
Mr. President, we have no report except we will be introducing a piece of information and I'm, be happy to talk about it later as new business, if you'd like.
Thank you, Consul Kozinski. Rules, Consul Rist?
Just a comment, Mr. President. I want to thank Consul Derby for clarifying, for instance, what he's gonna work on his agenda. There is no rule, but I would ask all chairs of all committees that have multiple items on their agenda, so that when it's published, they highlight the items that they are gonna speak about at any particular meeting, perhaps a yellow highlight and an asterisk that says, "This item to be discussed this evening." That way, the public, even though some may listen to us tonight, is fully aware that they will not be, if they attend a meeting, what will be discussed that evening. So I ask all of you who are chairs that have multiple items on your, I did this for one meeting and I, I think it's very helpful. So that's just to get the public better informed, also so they don't attend a meeting that you're not discussing something they want to speak to. Thank you. That's all, Mr. President.
New business, Consul Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I think I'll save all of us a little bit of time, if it's okay, by moving the mayoral appointments to new and 26 reappointments to the Appointment Subcommittee.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to move two new major appointments, a 26 reappointment to the Appointments Committee. Any further discussion? Consul Riley?
Yes, so just to clarify, there was a typo in two of these appointments and I just want to be clear on the record what the accurate expiration dates are. So thank you to the City Clerk's Office for catching this discrepancy. So to confirm, the city attorney appointment is done annually, not multiple years. So the record should reflect a term expiration date of December 31, 2023. And then also, East Hampton Housing Authority Board Member appointments are done in terms of five years. So the term expiration date for Ruth Genison should be December 31, 2027. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councillor? See you now, Marianne?
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Motion passes. Consul Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move the proposed revisions to city ordinance, Section 6-21, prohibition of single-use plastic bags and disposable food containers, to the Ordinance Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move to, to the ordinance committee, the proposal review to city ordinance. Any further discussion? Counselor Rist?
I just want to thank Counselor Zaret for acting on this quickly, because our business community needs it to be dealt with, and for Counselor Derby to act on it quickly as well. There is a deadline of January 1st, but do, do your due diligence. Thank you very much, Counselor Zaret and Counselor Derby.
Any other counselor?
Yeah.
Seeing none, Marianne?
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Brad Riley?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Connie Denham?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Krasinski?
Aye.
Motion passes. Counselor Derby?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move the Mass Development Memorandum of Agreement, Pleasant Street Mills, to property committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a seconds to move to property committee, the Mass Development